So, good evening. Greg Scrumo, Dennis Scrumo Engineers, representing the developer. And I have Rob Flowers here, one of the developer team members. And we're back in front of you, following our presentation last month on the project. And I don't know if you want me to rehash any of that presentation.
It's very condensed.
It was a little late last time. Do you guys want us to do the fly-through again? Is that going to help at all? Thirty-second clip, or you're good?
Do you need to see the fly-through again?
If you could just...
The fly-through is helpful.
Yeah.
I think that was probably more helpful than my technical stuff. Let me get the share screen thing up here.
You guys can see it up here?
Yep.
So we'll just let it go through and you guys take a look. If you want us to stop it or redo it, just let us know.
So I can talk while we're doing it, too. It's currently a little over 33-acre parcel that we are proposing to. It's currently zone R2A. And we're looking to get an R20 zone change for the parcel. And then put on a development which is a R20 clustered development. Seventy-six lots, based on the calculations per your code. I know somebody said there was 73 or something like that, but we worked that one out. I'm pretty sure I'm math was right. It's townhouse-type units geared more towards young professional-type individuals, young families, you know, starter home type thing, and empty nesters. They're not large footprints, right around 1,400, 1,300 square foot. Duplex townhouses, so it'll be no lot line for one side of lots and then 15-foot on the other side. There's a variety of amenities. What you see right there is the clubhouse that'll be open to all the residents of the subdivision. Some pickleball courts, things like bocce ball courts. Walking trails in the remainder of the site because we're going to leave a little over 50% of the site undisturbed. And that's even, probably a little bit more now will be undisturbed because there's certain buffer areas within the lots that are undisturbed, but we didn't count that. So it's actually a little bit more than 50%. Community garden areas, that sort of thing. It's meant to be more of a neighborhood where people have places to gather, know their neighbors, that sort of thing.
The community.
Yeah. Dog park, trail connection to the rail trail and beyond from there. And the goal is to, you know, although it's dense, we're trying to really preserve a lot of the natural features. There are some wetland habitats in the site that we're trying to protect. And actually, we've got a plan that really should avoid impacting any of them. If it does impact some, we put in a small number for like 2,000 square foot of impact. We don't even think we're going to need that. And there's like a little piece that we actually just kind of nick with the right-of-way. And if we really had to, we could probably move the road over a little bit. It just wouldn't be as smooth a transition for the road. We will be creating some wet ponds, a large wet pond that's part of the stormwater basin. And that'll be a feature that'll mitigate some of that. There's also, our detention basins are typically, they have either bio-retention basins of a diverse landscaping type population, or in this case, we would probably create a man-made wetland to help clear the water of any pollutants, that sort of thing, before it were released. So that would also kind of help mitigate some of that. So like I said, it's a 33-acre parcel. On the screen, you see it's a long parcel, narrow, relatively narrow, which makes it difficult to develop in your traditional subdivision-type method. And it's currently R-A, and which is dictated or shown here by the darker brown. The light green is the R20 that we're looking to get from the town. And as you can see, that is the vast majority of that area. Much of that brown to the north of us is open land that, you know, will probably never be developed in any kind of real dense way. The site... This is the layout we have. And again, it's kind of designed to limit disturbance, try and maintain an overall density that will work financially to actually develop the project. It's not exactly easy site to develop. There's wetlands, there's going to be a pump station. And then we've got all these amenities that we're trying to put in there, which are not inexpensive. And we're looking for similar zoning. The massing in some respects may look a little different than the adjacent neighborhood, but in reality, it's not that different.
Trying to keep it as green as possible. A lot of green space for the community. That was the feedback we got. We've been doing this, working on this for quite some time. So we wanted to leave a lot of open space for the community, you know, walk, walk around, open field for the families. So that was the thought with the cluster, but also leaving a lot of green space for everybody.
And this plan here shows the kind of constraints that we have on the site. The darker green shading is the wetlands. The, I guess, fuchsia is steeper slopes. Those are, we're trying to avoid them for the most part. As you get about halfway down from right to left on the thing, that's about the end of our development. So the rest of it, there's some steeper slopes and there's some, the blue down there is floodplain areas, so we're not going to be disturbing any of those. Try to leave that area as natural as it is. But there will be some walking trails, and we depicted them on the site plan in certain locations, but they can be varied. So if we're trying to avoid a certain feature or something like that, we can do that.
It was just on the trail near the shop right there. And there definitely is a floodplain there.
Yes, at the end there is.
After all that, it's scattered up.
And the floodplains, we, you know, there has to be a crossing of it. We'll have to get permitting for, the floodways are more of a burden to get across the floodplain. We'll have to just figure out, you know, capacity of anything to go through there. But that disturbance will be maybe 20 feet or so.
I mean, there was one area where it was not wet at all. It's because it was a rise up, and that was right across from the path going to the shop right.
We'll probably try to utilize that.
Good place to utilize for a connection for the...
Yeah.
Anyway.
And we've done some of those where we, actually, they are a raised timber path for some of those areas if we have to. So even if we had to cross, say, a wetland or something, we might do something like that, or propose doing something like that. It's kind of a neat feature. It protects that, you know, that element. And also adds a lot of interest to paths. So we're getting into it, you know? We'll get deeper into it when we get towards that design. I mean, right now, we're just trying to assess the impacts and hopefully prove to you that we can mitigate any impacts of any significance and then move on to a zone change. You know, without that, there's no use going crazy, you know, designing a lot of these things.
Yeah, make sure.
Make sure we make you happy first. So... Yep, so this map here shows the, there it is. This shows that gray area. Those are all the areas that we are, you know, not going to do any significant disturbance in, or are going to be left more in their natural state. The area here with the pond, we include that because that, once that's done, although that water level will fluctuate during rain events, it will be a wet pond. It will be a, you know, we do those, they're very nice, natural-type features that, you know, long-term will be beneficial to everything there.
Yeah, other than the trails through the gray area, that's good.
Yep. This is your typical, this is our bulk requirements table. And what you see here is the typical requirements for R2A, R20, and R20 with a cluster, which is what we're proposing. So, you know, we go from a two-acre, kind of a state lot, down to a 5,000-square-foot lot. But again, over half of the project area is not being disturbed. That's kind of the trade-off for that. And some of those percentages go up a little bit just because the lots are smaller, the homes are a little smaller, but they're not, you know, they don't shrink from, you know, half the size. They shrink a little less than that. And then you can see what your setbacks are. This lot that's shown here is the smallest lot that we have on a development. Some of these are a little bit bigger, but, you know, to give you a feel for what to expect, this is the smallest one. Essentially, a 20-foot setback from the right-of-way line. They are 50-foot right-of-ways, typical town, standard 24-foot roads, typical town road for something like this. You see a 15-foot setback, so it's 15-foot from the property line, but each of the units will be at least 30 feet apart. And these are minimums, so some of them are larger than that, but these are the minimums. And then a 30-foot rear yard setback. One nice feature about this site is that none of the lots that are along here or here that, you know, have maybe slightly less are actually adjacent to anything other than open area of some sort, whether it's the open area to the north or the power line easement here to the south, which, you know, at first glance may seem sort of like something that you don't want, but, you know, those lines are high and far away and it really, you know, looks pretty open. The lot of the lots, like in here, we've left these undisturbed areas between them. You know, these are all undisturbed areas. This is all undisturbed area. So there's very, you know, this lot here is going to be somebody that enjoys watching pickleball and bocce. But other than that, you know, everybody else has a pretty decent buffer adjacent to their property. I think I touched upon the major points.
Looks like it. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Eric, what's the department's take?
So this is really the first review, official review of this application, and we received a presentation previously. So for this, for tonight, the only action for the board to take is a declaration of its intent to be lead agency to permit circulation to other involved agencies. It's also on for review. First of all, for pre-application review, that's required by the code. So the board should take a look at the resources on the site. There'll be some more remarks on that and other comments received. There's also, the application will involve a recommendation back to the town board on rezoning and a preliminary subdivision and site plan review for the clustered subdivision, possibly an aquatic resource permit and architectural review eventually. The, so due to vagaries of the code, the town board referral to the planning board was actually for a, there was a zoning amendment application for multifamily residential that was initially made. Since then, some vagaries in the code came to light and it really, for one thing, clustered, the clustering's not permitted in the multifamily district. So the applicant has presented the application as a proposal for R20 rezoning, which does seem to make more sense. And we anticipate working with the planning board, the applicant, to develop a pathway included in the recommendation back to the town board eventually on how that could be accomplished. Let's see, it is a Type 1 action for Seeker. And there's a lot of information yet to be provided. For the pre-application review tonight focused on resources, you have the letter from Aspen Environmental on Wetlands. She can't make it tonight. I've got a text from her. You do have her letter as you do as well.
We do. We reached out to try to set up a meeting to make sure that we address all of her comments. They did meet on-site. And I'm not a wetlands expert, but our wetlands expert and Carol did meet on-site. I was not able to make it that day, but it seems like the issues that were brought up are pretty straightforward and we can address them. We did have one that came up we have already addressed. We had two homes here. It wasn't shown as a wetland, but there's a stone culvert of some sort that kind of connects the two wetlands. And it was her recommendation, we avoid that, so we took those two homes from here and moved them back into here. So that, Olivia, that problem, I think there might be some other problems, but nothing major. I think everything that I read in her letter can be addressed. I just want to, you know, we've got four letters. They're all, they're great comments, you know? We can get, you know, I did not see anything there that was at all insurmountable. But we've already started gathering some of the information relative to trip generations. Like I said, we've met with Carol. We're going to meet with her again and work on the other issues.
Yeah, appreciate you sharing that with Eric because there is a lot of, this is an unusual site with a lot of slopes and wetlands.
We'd like to actually sit and do a meeting together with you on the layout with Carol and, you know, at a staff level.
And that email I sent today was, I prefer in person, I think, you know? Enough of the Zoom if we can avoid it. You know, but, you know, you throw some paper down the table and just everybody kind of, you know, looks at each other and works out.
I think her general recommendation was maybe if some of that could shift a little bit westward towards the rail trail is, that might avoid some of the impacts that, you know, she and your consultant identified. So let's take a look at that.
Exactly. And I've inserted, our staff will look at it and see, you know, it doesn't raise all their impacts that, you know, aren't, you know, immediately visible, but we're, that's why it's, you know, we threw this up on the wall, you know? As close as what? I mean, it's to scale. It'll work, but we left the flexibility in there that if we need to move some stuff around, it can be done.
Yeah, it seems like a good development, the concept of clustering for this site is a good one.
It's perfect.
To that end, though, there will need to be some attention to, like, we just received the buildable yield analysis of that, which we didn't review it. We'll take a look at it for next time. We can talk about it in meeting, but that'll need to be, that'll need to be updated. With the resources on the site, you know, the board might want to talk some more about wetlands and if there's anything in particular you want to see. We don't know, for example, if there are rock-out crops or any significant standing trees.
There are some rock-out crops, yes.
So just for that, we might want to get that onto the plan for next time so that the board can consider the wetlands layout and those other resources as well for tweaking the layout back to work.
I mean, if it moves a little bit further west, that makes the trail even closer to ShopRite if that...
We're going to probably walk around again.
You know, but they don't want to shorten the trail too much. It won't be any fun. We heard the county's comments on that, so, you know, again, a couple of different connections on that will make that, you know, that much shorter. You know, we could take a couple hundred feet off of that distance to the grocery store pretty quick. So, no, those are the sort of things that we would welcome, to have a meeting like that and to sit down and, you know, mark up some paper.
Yeah, so the board's invited to discuss the resources. We also have come to the engineer and also we, as the traffic consultant, to take a look at it for the overall area, so they each have their comments to weigh in.
Yeah, and one thing that we were asked to do is to clarify public versus private utilities. Way back in the beginning, when this project was conceived, there was some thought about private roads and that sort of thing. And the intent at this point is to have everything public. It's not something that, from my experience, and I represent developers, we represent towns and villages, I can't imagine any homeowners, and I'm a president of two homeowners associations. No homeowner association wants to run a water system. I mean, it just, you know, it's, and when that sewer goes down at 2:00 in the morning and you're trying to get somebody out there as a, you know, manager of a homeowner association to get it fixed, you know, the towns have those abilities. I mean, we are fine with putting it in districts and that sort of thing, so there's no tax, no cost burden to the town for that sort of stuff. But, you know, for that to be put on an association is concerning to us. I think everybody had kind of this, you know, feeling that, you know, and even the HOAs, I'm president of, we don't own the water or sewer.
Yeah, I think that works out better for a transportation corp and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
But make sure the town's in agreement with it, though.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can't see where there's an additional, real additional burden on the town. I mean, the snow plowing, yes, but, you know, from maintaining sewer and water to usually go in a district, since, you know, there's nothing abnormal out of it.
And it's good to hear layout does not include cul-de-sacs because that's...
Does not what?
Does not have cul-de-sacs.
I know, nobody likes cul-de-sacs.
It's not fun for snow plows and fire engine turnarounds and things like that, so...
Yeah, no, I look at subdivisions. We designed back in the 90s with all the cul-de-sacs and no connections and stuff like that. And then, you know, when I had kids and we lived in one of those subdivisions and they're cutting through everybody's backyards trying to get to their friends in the next subdivision, you really start understanding why, you know, those are not ideal.
Connections are good.
Yep.
All right.
We've, on the access road, we are in the latter stages of getting approval from Central Hudson. They asked for a little more information, like the size of the dump trucks that are going to be building it and, you know, the equipment's going to be on it. I imagine there's some fiber optics or something like that underneath there.
There's a gas line under there.
Oh, there's a gas line, yeah. Yeah, they don't like heavy equipment on those. We've had to build bridges over those. So those are, you know, that's the level we're at right now. It's more of like, okay, you know, don't damage anything.
So we're just going to let the board hear from the engineer and the traffic consultant because they're on tonight, so we give them a chance to report to the board as well.
So you're finished, Eric?
Yes.
All right.
All right. So I try not to be too repetitive because Eric did touch on a few things with the density calculations on the cluster and open space calculations. It's been touched on with the stormwater, obviously. It exceeds the requirements for requiring a speedies permit and preparation of a SWIP, so that'll be something we'll have to sort through. We will need a water and wastewater engineers report to understand how the systems are being proposed to be built. The water department was actually interested in trying to make a connection between Inwood Avenue and Sunset to make a loop in their system. So if that's the direction you're looking to go with the public road, that makes that a simpler process.
Well, that won't be a public road. That's strictly a gravel emergency access.
Well, in this subdivision.
Oh, itself.
Yeah, I follow what you mean.
Yeah, the road underneath the...
Yeah, the emergency access would be for emergency access, yep. The sewer, if, we haven't seen much of that yet. I'm sure it's preliminary.
Yeah, we've started a layout on it and we can have that for you in, within a week or two.
Okay.
Essentially, there will be a pump station down by the clubhouse here. This here will, gravity back there, this will gravity back there, and then there'll be a forest main depending on which one of these two is phase one, back to here. And from here, it'll be gravity out.
Okay.
So we can, we've gotten to that point. We know we can do that, so...
The town has some specific requirements on pump stations?
Yep.
So we'll have to coordinate all that with you.
And hopefully, we'll get to that point. But I agree, but now we're, you know, we're just, we're saying, we're making sure we can fit, you know, sewer lines and forest mains and we got enough space put aside for a pump station.
Well, I mean, when we get to that point, we're obviously going to be looking for more detailed view of the development, you know, grading plans, utility plans, et cetera.
We'll start having some basic grading plans pretty quick to start, you know what? I don't want to get too deep into that as we're moving these roads around a little bit. But we'll have those in pretty good order. Essentially, almost everything from here goes down to that basin there drainage-wise. And then there's a piece in here that's going to go to this basin here, which will, it's shown pretty big. It'll probably, it could be smaller than that depending on how we configure it. And then everything from here will have to go to this basin here. So we're working on that part of it.
I know you mentioned Central Hudson coordination, so presumably that would need a permanent licensing agreement or something for that effect, which, if that'll be dedicated to the town, we'll have to make sure that everyone's on board with that.
And then we can figure out, if that's something that gets dedicated to the town that easement, then we'll...
Presumably, if the town's going to take over the road, we'll need to take over the emergency access as well.
Absolutely.
We have some comments on the wetlands, too, which I know Carol did a much more thorough review, but just understanding the size of those wetlands. There are some text labels on there, but they're a little hard to read because of the same color as the shading.
Yep.
So getting those sizes and whatever those buffer requirements are.
When the request was to go to 50-scale plans, which we will do at this point for you, you know, this was kind of like, it's what fits on a piece of paper. But, you know, we'll, you know, for more, you know, for more technical reviews, we'll split that up into 50-scale plans and that'll help a lot.
And eventually, you got to give a SWIP going.
Yep. Yeah, the SWIP, I don't see anything crazy relative to stormwater that, you know, we're not going to need any kind of exemptions or anything like that. We will be able to get you sewer, sewer, anticipated sewer flows and water usage flows, you know, basic engineering report-type data. We won't know lengths, exact lengths of pipes and that sort of stuff, but, you know, we'll... And you're talking probably the ones that, we'll just need to go into a district, do you think, for water and sewer?
Well, it's town-wide water district, so it should be in the district. I don't, I can't 100% say if it's in the sewer district. I would like to think it is because there is sewer out on the road there.
Yep. But that's the sort of stuff that we usually do.
We can double-check that, yeah.
We don't finalize them until we get the district mapping, if there's mapping and that sort of thing.
Parcel access indicates it's a public sewer district. I don't know which one.
Must be Fourth Ward.
So we can get those engineers' reports, at least draft form.
That would make sense. I know there is a gap up there, though.
It's in the Fourth Ward District, I'm sure. Anything else, Bobby?
No, that pretty much covers the bullet points.
It'll work to do. Just before I go to market, just want to check out Lisa, is there any comments you had on the zoning change that you said was complicated?
We'll have to work with the applicant because right now, the zoning doesn't permit two attached dwelling units. So our single-family definition is detached and townhomes are three or more. So right now, we don't have anything in our code that would allow this, but we all agree that, you know, having two units together makes a lot of sense and is desirable on a number of levels. So we'll, after this, we'll work offline with the applicant and staff to come up with something that works. And we'll do that procedurally as a recommendation back to the town board as part of the zoning change because they originally, as Eric said, recommended an RM change. Now it's R20 on their application, so we'll probably advise the planning board to say that R20 is a good thing and also while you're at... thing and also while you're at it, we need this additional text code.
And those examples of the two family, of the two double like that, town roof, I'm sure, but that's not our town.
Not yet.
All right.
Do you want to get together, you know?
Sure, yeah, we will have one.
Great, sit down.
We should follow up with a, you know, a departmental and staff meeting.
Okay.
Including Carol and the engineering staff.
Yeah, I mean, we can do those as one global meeting or we can do the...
They're kind of separate issues. It might, might be more efficient actually to do the layout thing as one thing.
Separately.
And then we work on the zoning. That's actually not that complicated, the zoning, but we can, yeah.
And also Karl Marx on that.
Yep. Mark, do you have any early comments on this?
Yeah, nothing, I did have a comment, nothing substantial, because obviously, we're in a kind of preliminary design. You know, we'll have more detailed comments when we get further along the detailed design drawings, but from just the concepts basically and the fact of the rezoning, we're just looking for some supportive documentation from the applicant, just a comparative trip generation analysis of the theoretical maximum number of single-family homes that could be provided on the property as it currently is zoned to what the proposed development is proposing with the rezoning. So, that's just more of a, you know, a quick analysis of a trip generation comparison really, just for support of the zoning that the applicant's looking for.
All right. Thank you, Mark. It's good, more traffic coming out of Inwood there, so we'll see what that analysis reveals. At this point, we can go around the boards for comments. Peter?
I have a question first with the town engineer, and that is, have you been on this site?
I have not personally, no.
I was on this site the other day, and the comment was made here tonight that this is not an easy site to develop. And having walked that site, I can tell you that 20 years ago, it wasn't that long ago, nobody would even given this site a second look. I mean, this is very challenging. I noticed on your EAF, the proportion of site comprised of bedrock outcropping, I saw considerable flaches of rock and boulders there, and I think the estimate of 1.5% of that site is probably optimistic.
A lot of that, and we're, we're called on that, on the soil, draining of the soil.
Yeah.
Those come from the soil maps, so everybody's different. We'd be happy to go out there and make a different assessment or another assessment. Some of those soil maps were also done prior to some clearing, maybe, you know, that sort of stuff, so, you know...
Honestly, you don't, I'm just going to point this out to you, because this is just, we're just sharing some information here for tonight, just so you can, for future reference. The same thing, you know, the site elevation change from east to west is 100 feet, which is, I'll tell you, is significant. When I was on the site the other day, when I got out of my car, I heard a noise, whether it was wind or what it was, about 100 feet away on what is the northeast corner of that property, there was a torrent of water and it was headed directly toward your proposed site. And that's something, I don't know where that water is coming from, whether it's coming from the other side of Inwood Avenue, it can't all be coming from your site, but I think it's something you definitely have to look at, because it's going to have to be addressed.
Yep.
I think for the, again, for engineer, I think because of the, the rock that I saw at least, and when you visit the site, you'll see it as well, whether or not a geotech study here is warranted. Also, I saw old bricks accumulated on the site, which may indicate that there may have been, it could just be anecdotal, but whether or not we should look at, plus the fact that it's adjacent to a capped landfill, whether or not an ESA number one should be conducted. But that's, we don't have to discuss that tonight, we just think about that. Also, the town traffic consultant, you may be aware of it, because I think the town is using your company, but their plan is to change the traffic light at the corner of Inwood and Fulton to a four-way stop, just for your information.
Yeah, they authorized that last night at the town board meeting, so, yeah.
So, again, this is not going to be an easy site to develop. I think everybody on the board, if they have the opportunity, should walk this site, because with our respect, it does not look like that over, like the flyover that you showed. This is a very rough, challenging site, believe me, I've been on a lot of them, and I can tell you, again, if it weren't for the fact that there's so little property left in the town that can be developed, that has water and sewer, I'm sure, you know, most people wouldn't touch this with a 10-foot pole, so you have, your work cut out for you, but we'll work with you, you know, to the extent that we can.
Yeah. About 20 years ago, a very wise old engineer told me that all the good sites were gone.
Yeah.
That was 20 years ago or more, like 25. We don't have easy sites anymore.
I feel your pain, depends where you are.
And we've used the design around a lot, and the contours, we're trying to fit that into the actual design, so it, you know, it's a little easier.
I had your, your designs with me when I walked the site.
Yeah.
The thing that struck me was that this water, there was a torrent.
Yeah.
It was headed right for your buildings.
Yeah, I think, I think you were probably...
On the east side of it, yeah.
Right about in this area here.
That's right, on the northeast corner.
Yeah, and that's why there's no houses there, because when we walked around, I was like, oh, okay.
It was one of the first things we were addressing.
This is not buildable.
Well, you went to engineering school, one of the first things I'm sure they taught you was that water flows downhill.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's at a very rapid pace.
A lot of things.
This is also about the breaking point of where it starts getting steeper coming down, which is one of the reasons that we're trying to, you know, not do...
Well, there's still a pretty good shift in elevation.
There is, yeah.
This is probably a good 30 feet in here, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not going to have any problem getting that sewer to flow down to where the pump station's going to be.
Again, I would encourage our engineering people to take a very close look, and if you can, if you get the chance to walk the sites, you'll have some idea of, you know, what's going on here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your comments.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Joan, hey?
Are these houses, do you plan for them to have basements?
No.
No, on slab.
And just for, you've moved the dog park on this version?
Yes.
Okay.
My dog likes to be in the woods.
Well, because it was kind of in the center of the development before, so...
Yeah, we were, it was one of those things where, you saw one of the early ones, I, I, we started looking, it was getting a little too crowded in there for that sort of stuff.
Yeah, not every, I mean, I love dogs, but not everybody does, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are my comments for now.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question about the basement, because that would have been...
Yeah, now that...
Doesn't make sense there.
Yeah.
Not at all.
I mean, I echo what Peter said, this is...
We can do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Russell?
I currently live in the townhouse development, and I'd say it's probably about 80% retirees, so I'm throwing that to preface. I said that as, as a preface, and I'm really going to pick up a little bit on Eric's comment on number six regarding addressing sidewalks, the streetlight and visitors and the street parking, visitor and the street parking. I can't tell from the plans, and it's, I know it's early, whether or not you can fit two cars in the driveway or not. Otherwise, I see no, no visitor parking, I can say that being a retiree for 18-plus years now, there are two cars, a family, and so, and I think that most retirees have, each have their own cars, and they're fairly busy. I mean, and so, and plus, the visitor parking comes in handy, because there's lots of activities that they go on in the home, whether it be bridge games or mahjong games or whatever, and they switch around, so I don't see any of that.
So, let me, yeah.
Bocce.
Well, we're...
Bocce courts will be busy.
I noticed the pickleball, because that's great, because we have two tennis courts. Tennis was hardly ever played, and they were converted into two pickleball courts, and they're always used.
They're always packed, right?
So, it's, it's great that you chose the pickleball. So, that's one area where I don't see it now, I know it's early, but it's something...
We are, we are, we, I don't know if, I'm not sure if it was you that made the comment the last meeting.
Yes.
But we've, we're looking at that, and there's a couple options that we're looking at. One is, we're going to put more parking over by the clubhouse, and then we're going to put some parking over by the pickleball and bocce courts, which can be...
Caution a little bit, because, you know, as we get older, we can't walk as far.
We've thought about putting a few pads, you know, three, four spots in certain areas.
Yeah, so those, those will be there for people using those, but also, you know, the other comment was that there's no overnight parking during the winter months, so if there's overnight guests or something and need overflow parking, those could be used more for those sort of things.
Right.
They can be, and I put the, the plan here with the typical plan for, for townhouses, we could widen those driveways and make them two cars wide. We don't want two garages, but...
So, you have, right, you have the garage and then you have the driveway, and if we were to widen that driveway, you could put another car there theoretically.
That kind of makes sense.
Two cars. We just didn't want to use up a lot of green space.
Yeah, we were trying to not, but, you know, if everything's a concern...
But it could be there.
I can tell you that they're used, okay, not only for that, but also for dinner party events, for example.
Oh, sure.
Or whatever, and, and we've got a little over 110, maybe 120 units, and there's pads like, probably on the street I live on, and there's three or four streets there, probably a half dozen or more pads where at least two cars fit, some of them are three. And so, there's quite a, there's quite a bit, and they're, they're usually used, they're used quite a bit.
We discussed it, absolutely.
You know, and for, for functions, like, because, you know, you're going to have people over, that sort of thing, as long as they're not overnight, the roads are 24 feet, so you can park on the street and still get cars, you know, past there. It was, to me, it's more of, okay, what, the overnight, or, you know...
Exactly.
You have two cars and you also want to pack your garage with, with stuff, you know?
Well, the two-car with, for each garage, that makes some sense, because, you know, the kids may move, may move out of state or move elsewhere, but when they come, sometimes they do stay overnight, and so you don't want to have to...
We did it so they wouldn't move back in.
You want someone to convenient.
Trying to help them out.
You don't want them to move back.
We didn't want, that's why we did that, exactly.
Yeah, don't make it too convenient.
Keep them out.
Do you know what your target buyers are, a lot of seniors, or...
You know, yeah, well, yeah, the target was both seniors and families, so we have one of the bedrooms on the, on the, on that main floor.
Main floor bedrooms.
Right, so it could be an office, could be a bedroom, so that was for the senior, so you don't have to go up the stairs and, you know, it's less, less headache, less, less things to take care of. I think it works both for small families and seniors, it's perfect.
I notice a lot of seniors in the area that, you look at the downsides of other homes and they don't have places to go.
Absolutely. We've gotten that a lot with people we spoke with about the project.
I think you're also going to see a lot of young families looking for this type of home again, because that standalone house is just becoming way too expensive. I know I've got, I've got three kids, they're scrambling trying to find a place to live, and, you know, they're not touching so many houses today.
Exactly. It's crazy.
What do you think the price point is going to be?
So, yeah, we've discussed that, we're, we're thinking it's going to be probably mid-fours. It's what we've, we've been told higher, but we want it to be affordable for people and, you know, the point is to get people in, so that's what the thought process was.
Well, to complete my comments, then, I mean, I heard earlier it was more of a retirement to community, but if not, it's going to be mixed younger families and all.
Yeah, I kind of...
Anything there for kids?
Oh, there's a lot of green space to run around, you know, there's, there's not a playground, there's more liability, you know, but maybe a basketball court.
My kids have found places to play.
Understood, understood.
You guys come back.
Right, yes.
I'm not passing any judgment yet.
Yes.
Well, I mean, you know, that's one of those things too, if it becomes something where all of a sudden it's geared towards, a lot more towards younger families, then the HOA will put a playground in no time, you know, I mean, it's, they've got that ability, there's, there's land that's available to that HOA to modify like that.
Right, the people don't want to go in knowing that their HOA fee is one thing, and then six months later, it goes up significantly, because that wasn't in their...
The budget, right.
Sounds like, sounds like you've been there.
Right.
Well, I mean, I've also been on boards of condos and stuff, so I know what that's like, but anyway, I've started off.
But it's still early stages, so...
Yeah, it's good enough.
So, we are, we are looking at the parking issue and, you know, and we're open to those options and...
And let's see...
No, nothing more at this time.
I mean, Mike...
This is early stages, so...
Mike, I mean, I noticed on the, on the map, you say dotted lines and say future possible connection to the rail trail, I'd like to see that as part of the, the application. I think that's a good amenity to have that access to the shop rate and all the other businesses.
We're perfectly fine with that. I think that was at the point where everybody wasn't even sure when the rail trail was going to open up, and we just haven't changed it, we brought up a couple times, but...
Opening, operating looks, it looks good. And the other thing I had a question on, on a previous application, who owns the rest of the land that's...
The HOA.
So, the HOA will...
Yeah.
The back half of the land?
Yes.
Do you guys want it?
I know.
I know.
I think we're, 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 we're told no one will run.
The HOA will take care of all the open space and the other half. All right? And I guess that's it for now.
Okay. The planning board declared its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type one action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved agencies and identified interested agencies.
Second.
Moved to seconded for lead agency, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following, one through 17.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. Good luck with the project and...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Everybody have a great holiday.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. See you next year.
Next up is Sky Point Hills, Manchester Road.
Oh, yeah.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Don Petroncola would take up an architecture. We are, it's the first time we're presenting to the planning board, so I'm going to give you a high-level review. Okay, so the subject properties front on Route 55 at 20210 Manchester. The first parcel has an existing commercial and multifamily structure on it, which is in fairly poor condition. The plan is for that to be removed. The second parcel, or this, that parcel is 1.139 acres and that parcel is zoned B9. The second parcel is a little over two acres and is developed with a single-family dwelling, which you can see on the right. The plan is to salvage that building, renovate it to serve as a community use facility for the complex, and this parcel is zoned R20. The project will combine the lots and we are seeking a rezoning of the merged parcels to RM use.[1785.91] We presented the project to the committee of the whole on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two and conducted a pre-application review with the town on January tenth, twenty twenty-three. A change zone application was submitted in August. We formally presented our plan of development to the town board on September twenty-seventh and received authorization to proceed to the planning board. So we are proposing to develop the parcel for a mix of dwelling unit building types. We propose two three-story, ten-dwelling unit apartment buildings, which front to the highway, and two two-story, two-dwelling unit townhouse structures to the rear of the property for a total of twenty-eight proposed dwelling units. Two accessory, single-story parking structures are planned with five garage spaces each. All units are planned to be two-bedroom capacity. Our site plan shows parking spaces for fifty-eight vehicles, including the garage buildings and the townhouse garages. Three spaces are planned to be accessible parking. Eastbound traffic on Route fifty-five will access the site through a one-way entrance at the northwest. Two-way traffic is off of Sky Hill Road across from McIntosh Drive. The site slopes up approximately thirty feet in grade rise from Manchester Road to the rear of the parcel. So we have a good deal of grading to deal with. But we feel this works in our favor with the larger apartment buildings sighted at the lower elevation and fronting the more commercial portion of the site and the smaller townhouses at the higher elevation and more in scale with the single-family homes in the neighborhood to the south. We are proposing a fully landscaped site. The site perimeter tree buffer is to remain, as are the street trees and DOT right-of-way. The existing trees in the center of the site and close to the existing community building, if you've walked the site, you've seen that they're they're broken, they're generally unhealthy, they're non-native. We will examine more closely if any trees can be salvaged. We are proposing with this plan approximately sixty percent open and landscaped space in the project. Landscaping planned will be native spaces in a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. Foundation plantings around the property will be provided but are yet to be developed. We've initiated utility and grading design. These need to be further advanced. We are planning two stormwater management areas and understand that the water main connection will need to be on the eastbound shoulder of Manchester Road. Dark sky lighting fixtures have been selected and photometric data provided, and we will advance the details on this data further. The apartment exterior will be a mix of residential-style cladding materials to include cultured stone, fiber cement siding and seven-inch traditional clapboard with highlighted areas of vertical board and batten as well as flat panels. The windows are proposed to be Anderson single-hung encasement in black frames. Roofing is asphalt shingles and charcoal with standing seam metal accent roof components. The third-floor units are tucked into the bracketed and gabled roof to reduce the massing and scale of the apartment structures to closer to what may be defined as a two-and-a-half-story building. Open covered deck areas, you know, lighten this massing. The color palette that we are planning is light and dark gray with white and black accents. The building plans have been submitted to the town. The building heights per zoning definition are as follows. Apartment one is thirty-one foot three inches. Apartment two is thirty feet eight inches. Townhouse one and two are twenty-seven foot three inches above grade at the entry side. The townhouses are detailed in a traditional attached housing appearance with gabled roof, integral garages and front-entry porches. The materials and colors are going are planned to be compatible with the apartments. The existing Dutch colonial residence will be repurposed to serve the residents of the complex and we're planning a fitness room, package delivery, kitchen and gathering room, a guest room, small conference and Zoom rooms. The architecture will be repaired and refinished in its existing historic paint colors and materials. The proposed accessory five-guard structures will be detailed with compatible design materials and colors to the new residential buildings. Finally modeled rendering views are shown here to better illustrate the complex architecture, scale and feel of the community. We have received written comments from the town, the county and the consultants, and we will be coordinating with the civil engineer to clarify all the discrepancies in this submission and provide an updated set of documents for the February meeting. We are hoping to get a meeting scheduled with the town, perhaps the second week in January, so we can keep that schedule moving. Brief, five minutes. Kristen told me five minutes.
Thank you. And you listened. That's what's more impressive. Thank you.
It's it's looks like a nice project. Do you have any particular target audiences of the
This is not going to be age-restricted.
Not age restricted, okay. It's just anybody. All right, Kristen?
Thank you again. So the application, this is the application's first appearance before the planning board. As the applicant mentioned, they appeared before the town board in September and the town board at that time referred this application to you as the planning board for an environmental review and an advisory report regarding the requested zoning district change. The application is on for seeker review. It is an unlisted action, subject to a coordinated review. You will be tasked with providing said advisory report to the town board for the zoning district change. As was noted, there are two parcels involved with the application currently. They are to be merged. And then we we would take the existing BN zoning district classification and also the single-family residence R twenty and that would be rezoned to RN or RM, excuse me, residence multifamily. The application is also obviously on for site plan review and architectural review. I performed a a quick review of the EA F part one that was provided. I'm encouraging, and Don and I had spoke earlier this week, and he's he has these comments. But we're encouraging consultation to begin consultation with DOT as that can be a lengthy process. I will leave it at that. Also consultation with the state historic preservation office. We would be looking for a no-impact letter. Again, this is documented in the recommendation and this is sort of standard practice for the seeker review component. The site plan comments, there's twenty-five of them. You're welcome. And but, you know, on a serious note, you know, the review was done based on the proposal as it currently stands. Obviously, there may be changes as the project evolves a little bit based on parking requirements, perhaps how infrastructure feeds through the property, accessibility requirements, connections between the site and actually getting out to fifty-five. I know there's a strong desire to make that internal connection to fifty-five as this property would not be very far from rail trail access. I know that was listed or identified or discussed in my review, and I think the county identified it as well.
Close to Vassar College also.
Yes, very close. Also, the county planning department did provide an incomplete with comments review, which just means that they're looking for a resubmission with a little bit more detail. We know they had asked for some clarification about the lighting. I think maybe they hadn't seen the photometrics plan that was included when they began their write-up, but then they did provide specific hotspot comments related to lighting later in their memo, so maybe they didn't go back. We haven't had a chance to catch up on that this week, so we can actually follow up offline about that. And to my point about the comments that you see here relating to the proposal that's currently before you as it might change, we are encouraging the applicant and we appreciate that you've already acknowledged that you'd like to meet with us off-staff or offline with staff prior to making another submission. It is typically the more efficient approach. And I say efficient, it really just means it gives us an ability to really talk through some of that technical information and see what will work and what won't, frankly. So for this evening, I am recommending that the planning board adopt a seeker lead agency intent resolution for the environmental review and also deferring action with comments at this time. I also just wanted to point out that we don't have any formal comment memo provided from the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, but they did acknowledge that a review would be required by their office. So I would also encourage you to begin that consultation as well, sooner than later. And for the planning board at this time, you know, no two developments are the same, particularly with multifamily developments. But we are looking, again, I mean, parking is always the first thing, but also access to the site, the accessibility. We're looking at standard parking, potentially EV parking, accessibility parking. How is that community space being utilized? Is it meant to serve the residents on the property? Is it open to the public? There, you know, there are some questions that will, you know, we will get to, again, acknowledging this is your first application to the planning board. And I would also encourage the planning board at this time, since it is so early in the process, that if you have initial comments regarding the architecture, that you would perhaps acknowledge that at this point in favor of or or not. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kristen. You can have some comments, too, coming, I'm sure, from neighbors once the public carry opens.
Have you spoken to the neighbors yet about this project?
Yes, we've been working with insertion and obviously since we've been working on this for a year, so.
Okay.
Having presented to the committee of the whole and the town board, we've discussed this with neighbors. So everyone's been aware of this project for a while.
Let me start with Jamie here with Bobby.
Sure. For starters, it seems like I always say this, there'll be more than an acre of disturbance, so you will need a speedy's permit and a SWIP prepared with a future submission. Please coordinate any of that prep work, like soil testing with our office ahead of time. We like to be involved with that. One of the bigger things was the the south, I believe it would be southeast outlet onto Spy Hill Road and McIntosh. If that could be realigned more in line with McIntosh, it I think that would be a better fit for traffic circulation. It's a little bit off-center from that McIntosh connection.
Well, we do have the town substation there.
Oh, is there something there?
There's a sewer, there's a sewer substation.
Oh, in that fenced-in area?
There's a water pump station to get water, water pressure up to the top of the hill, also right there, right, right along.
I see that here now.
We had originally had the entrance of
I do believe.
to the other side of that substation here. But at the neighbor's request, who lives across the street, it lined immediately up with their driveway.
Yeah.
So it does make more sense to try and align with McIntosh, but we do have to work around that substation.
All right. I know that Tommy from the water department had mentioned that he'd prefer you tie onto Manchester, which our comment might be null and void at this point, but there was a fire hydrant shown on the upstream side of the water meter. So any any hydrants, private hydrants that are gonna be installed would have to be on your side of the water meter.
Okay.
There's clearly a lot of grading that's gonna go into this project, so we would like to see a cut-and-fill analysis to see how that's gonna work. There's a fair amount of steep slopes, a lot around the perimeter. Some of it is leading offsite, some of it's bringing water onsite. So just taking a close eye, a close look at that with the SWIP and making sure that we're not impacting anyone offsite. It looks like there's a a permanent diversion swale along the the southern property line. So we'd like to look at that and and avoid any concentrated runoff there, so you might need to do like a flow spreader or to to convert that flow back into she-flow as opposed to concentrated flow or or making some other alteration, however you guys see fit. I think those are the big items. So I'll just look forward to to meeting with you guys and and Hudson Land Design and working through some of those kinks.
We'll have to do the offline meeting with, you know, the staff and you guys get involved in that, help iron out a lot of details before you do the next submission.
And I would, if I may, there there were, we did circulate this or had our environmental consultant take a look at this. Aspen Environmental, Carol Knapp. The comments were, you know, fairly straightforward. There were no significant concerns raised. If anything, this was pulling the road, I believe, a little bit more into the property, and I think there was just a question about potential restoration on the Vassar property. But again, this is technical in nature, not something that, you know, we'll continue to work through this.
I think just wet areas is not too far into the Vassar property there.
She also mentioned about possible Indiana bats and the restriction on
Tree cutting, yeah, that's that's down the road a bit, but yeah. All right, well, let's go around the board with comments. Nicole here.
Not too much. I'm just wondering how this is gonna look because it's gonna be about ten feet above Route fifty-five with all that fill that you're putting in, right?
It's actually, I believe that those apartments are not filled higher than what the grade currently is. Too much.
Just show that actually looks, the grading plan.
The grading plan looks like it's pretty significant.
It does look pretty severe. We'll be coordinating with the civil engineer and bring him here next time.
Maybe it's not higher than, but maybe it's deeper.
Okay. Are you going to be sprinkling these buildings?
Yes, of course, all of them, including the community building.
Okay. Oh, so the garages, too?
Probably not the private garage. So they're they're not a combined garage. They'll be have, you know, party walls in between them, so there's not a really a code requirement for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Rocco?
No, not at this time. I mean, I I've got a few questions, but they can wait. I'm good.
And and as we go around, as we said, anybody, as Kristen says, anybody has any architecture comments that is weighing that to come on?
I think that's fair. Because I don't know, I mean, I've been been to that site to see how the neighborhood and how the architecture or the proposed architecture mix with that neighborhood.
I was just saying, family homes go up the hills.
It's gonna be large compared to the to the houses that are over there.
They're just older, smaller.
They're old, yeah, they're older, smaller homes.
Most of the houses along Spy Hill are one-story ranches.
Right.
But the grade does continue to go up, so we've got that working for us.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything at this time, but generally I think the the architecture looks nice.
Thank you.
All right, Peter. How many units will we look at here?
Twenty-eight units total. Two bedrooms.
Twenty apartments and eight townhouses, right?
There are four townhouses.
Four townhouses?
Yeah.
Okay. And then twenty-eight?
And each apartment building is ten apartments.
Okay. All right.
It's up to the town board, you know, whether or not they think that this is an appropriate use for this site. But if they determine that it is an appropriate use, I have to say that the the profile on these townhouse units or the apartment schematics, that's three-story buildings, they're way, way, way out of out of character for that neighborhood. Like you just said, they're all single, uh, single-family homes, mostly ranch style. This is way overbearing. I mean, I'm looking at PZ zero-three. As Steve is a very creative architect, is very talented, I'm sure he can come up with some ideas. But I think that the that size, that magnitude of structure is way, way out of character for an old-established neighborhood like that.
And those are those are the apartment buildings down closer to the road you're talking about?
Even so, they're almost forty feet high. No.
Thirty-seven feet?
The
That's what my
The apartment, the apartment heights are thirty and thirty-one feet and the third, though they're three stories.
Roof apex thirty-seven feet.
Right, but the by zoning definition, which is to the median of the slope roof, they're thirty feet.
He's talking about the way it looks.
Yeah, and but well, we're permitted to do three stories in the RM zone and what we're trying to do is achieve a building look that looks like two-and-a-half stories.
Yeah.
It is still a fairly large building block, so the roofs kind of go up, which led us to the solution of we can get a two more units in that third floor if we pull them and put them underneath that roof. So that
You may have to scale back the number of units in order for them to be an appropriate neighbor. Thank you. I mean, I mean, think think of it as yours. I mean, take a look at Jersey, you know, make this guy's in that third, that top floor.
I don't pretend to be.
But it is big.
I don't pretend to be an architect too, but I do think perhaps the color scheme, does that play into that, you know, the mass?
I mean, it looks nice, but it is darker compared to the colors of some of the other houses there. They are lighter in color.
Would be nice to have like another one to fly through to see the perspective of the complex in regard to the surrounding. Because I think some of the concern that I heard from friends about some of the buildings that on Raymond that they aren't intimidating compared to the surrounding structure. So I haven't been to that neighborhood to get a good idea about what is there. And I think it would be nice to see that.
I'd just like to finish. Because of the size of the buildings, it's also going to be very difficult to mitigate the buffer. So I'm just saying, keep it in mind. Or if you come up with some ideas, we'd be glad to hear about how to mitigate the size of the buildings versus the basically single-story buildings.
Yeah, in particular, that adjacent neighbor there up the hill, you've got a little line of deciduous trees, but then I think those, the only evergreens near them are probably slated to come down. So I think there's going to be concerns of light spillage.
Well, we can do a greater analysis on that. I mean, we're never going to be able to develop this parcel with single-story buildings.
No, no, I'm saying.
Which is so, that the idea of putting the three-story close to the highway, lower elevation, and just going standard two-story with the townhouses was, you know, we thought justifiable.
Yeah, as Ahmad said, maybe a better visual, like a fly-through. I know Steve does that with his projects.
Absolutely. We've modeled the entire site and we can look at that better.
So you can see in relation to the hill, but the hill rises pretty quickly there. My comments are also, you have getting that sidewalk connection probably easier on the east side where it's flatter along Spy Hill Road. Get a sidewalk connection down to Route 55 where there's already a crosswalk to the So I think the grade is too much in other areas, but you guys can look at that. And did you have any, you said the Vassar land repair, I guess, did you have any ideas on that already? It's right now, you have to remove that old pavement.
Not yet. We're just getting into that as.
What are you going to do to that to work out with them?
Yeah. We've just got our first pass on grading and we realize we're going offsite to the Vassar property, so we've got to look at that.
Currently on the Vassar property, so the pavement there, so I'm glad it's going to be remediated there. And I guess the fire department had a lot of comments, so work with them on hydrant locations and all that, et cetera stuff. Get in touch with them as soon as you can. And the other question I had was, you talked about the community center, the existing house. You know, what type of things are you keeping in that, like the kitchen?
Yeah. The plan, it will essentially remain the same and just reuse of the spaces for the residents of this community. Fitness area, there's an exterior porch, which would be great for yoga. I think we've talked about, there's going to be a package delivery room, a kitchen and a gathering room, like if you're having a birthday party, small conference rooms, Zoom rooms, that kind of a thing.
Okay, great. Sounds like you thought about that ahead of time. All right, that's all I have for now.
I move the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent dated December 21st, 2023, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to all identified and interested and involved agencies.
Second. Move the seconded for lead agency. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion passed six to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and direct applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through 14.
Second.
Move the seconded to per. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion passes six to zero. All right?
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Appreciate your comments.
Do that offline meeting in January and we'll go in from there.
Thanks for hanging in there.
How do you get earlier on the schedule?
Don't worry, next time.
All right, good evening. Those of you who may know me, my name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Roadie, Slick, and Andrews here in Poughkeepsie. I am with Justin Buttwell, who is director of physical plant for Marist. We are here this evening for a project that's known as the St. Anne's renovation. If those of you are familiar with Marist College, the St. Anne's Hermitage, as it's kind of called, is probably the northernmost structure on the Marist College campus. It's above the North Campus housing, it's tucked in. There is a conservation area around it that the college calls Fern Tor, which they use for a variety of purposes. This has been through the years, various program space. It was used for offices, it's been used for the ROTC, variety of uses. It is one of the few buildings on the Marist College campus. It has its own well and it has its own septic system, the details of which are unknown to those of us who have been around for quite a while. The proposal, as it is this evening, is we're going to convert that into what is essentially the president's complex, if you will. It will house a residence for the president, including his, you know, three-bedroom residence apartment. And then there will be meeting and gathering space on the first floor, all of which is associated with the president's occupancy. In other words, this isn't going to be used by the math department on a Tuesday for a class. This only gets used as if the president is involved. It gives him a private space on the Marist College campus to hold meetings, to hold dinners, to hold other events when he needs to meet with his staff, his cabinet, professors, whatever. But essentially, this is going to be where the Marist College president resides.
So to put a finer point on that, in his roles and responsibilities, he would have team dinners and things like that, but it's not intended to be for a guy like me to book and have, you know, a staff dinner. It's really, the entire structure is dedicated to the president's residence.
Dennis said, now you're doing it?
The proposal involves, we're going to essentially, we're going to essentially use the building as it is. We're adding a small, I think it's almost 250-square-foot addition on the front of the building. Right in here?
Yep.
To increase the gathering space. And then on the back of the building, if you were ever there in the past, they had a really unique thing. They had a third story, if you will, that was elevated on roughly stilts in the back of the building. It's got, had a roof over it. So we're going to take that same footprint and we're going to use it for three stories. We're going to put a basement in, we're going to put a match to the first floor, and then we're going to expand the third floor. The third floor was always expanded, but we've kind of gutted it and done that. So realistically, the exterior of the structure is going to remain essentially as it is today. There was a garage structure on the extreme west end. That garage is going to be converted to meeting space and other things. Site-wise, we're adding a two-car garage. After all, it is a residence. We're adding one handicap parking space. We're improving access. If you've been there, there's a driveway that kind of goes right up along the front. There's a walled courtyard. What we're going to do is create a landing space so cars moving in, coming in, would be able to park and drop it off. We're going to use the characteristic Marist patterned blue stone and concrete combination to kind of differentiate it from the asphalt. We're going to put some planters along the front of the building. They'll mirror the stone wall that's in the front of the building, and they help us with grading because we need to flatten this whole space out for handicap access. We're going to add a small handicap path from the top of the hill, the main parking area, and down into the site. The biggest change we're actually making is we're going to make a connection to town water out at Route 9. We've already worked with the water department. We're going to come into campus, drop a meter vault, and then bring water over to the building. And we're actually going to replace the septic by connecting this facility to the campus collection facility, sewage collection facility. Requires a small pump station in the back will pump up the hill and actually flow down into some of the improvements we built for North Campus Housing. Overall, it's relatively modest. I think the biggest change is going to be the appearance of the building. If you've been up there, it's a really gorgeous building. It just needs to be rehabbed. The roof will be maintained and upgraded.
Yeah, it has to be replaced.
And the walls and the windows and doors will be new. So it'll be a more efficient space. We're creating, you know, everything, the real guts of this project happens inside. We have gotten all your comments. There's nothing we can't address. I have no issue with Kristin and the engineering comments. None of them were unanticipated, so we're in the process of working with them now. And as I said, we've worked with the water department. That was the key one. But, and I'll just, if I can. This is kind of what you would see from the campus, the front of the building is going to remain unchanged. You can see the new little addition here. That's the one side. And then the garage. The garage is going to be built and mirror the building so it looks like it belongs. We're not putting up your standard white clapboard-sided garage. It's going to match what's there. And again, the whole goal here is to create a residential feel for the president. And the fact that he's going to be nestled in this conservation area kind of enhances that. And that's what our goal would be. The other thing to keep in mind is there's a parking lot there. We built that parking lot for North Campus Housing. In the event that there would be an event where it held something, that would be the parking lot people would use. We'd probably reserve spaces for that event and people would park in there. And this is not adding anything to campus except the place for the president to live. Most of what goes on on campus today, when he has his meetings and other things and luncheons, is in more public spaces. Doesn't always work that well for a president. So essentially, this is really just kind of repositioning where these events occur. So we're not adding staff, we're not adding, you know, special gatherings. So while we understand it's always a concern at Marist and parking, we'll make it work because it already works on campus.
That's good.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Yes.
What do you think, Kristin?
I just want to know if you're going to set the building alarm off when we redo this building?
Set?
You have a record of setting the alarms off, right, when you were showing us around?
Oh, yeah, I took that out.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a burglar alarm in there when I walked them through.
Yeah.
I made a mistake.
You're on the list. Okay, so anyway, this application is on for secret review for an unlisted action, subject to an uncoordinated review, coastal consistency review, site plan review, and architectural review. Fairly straightforward. You know, this was the application's first appearance before the planning board, so if you have any questions or comments about architectural changes or the use of the property, we would anticipate that the next time the applicant came back, they would be on for a public hearing. As was noted, the comments, you know, are fairly straightforward. It's cleaning up the site plan, basically. And so at this point, we are recommending that the board, you know, provide any comments, discuss the application, and then defer action with comments. And then we would put you on for public hearing next time.
Right. Yeah, we intend to make a submittal for the February meeting. We're not as adventuresome as making your January.
Right, yeah. Thank you, actually. And also, the Dutchess County Department of Health, they had provided no real formal comment, but they had said that the application was subject to their review and approval.
I had a long discussion with the sewer superintendent today, so we will reach out to the health department. They're all of a sudden reaching their fingers into Marist, which they haven't before. But we will talk to them and get that squared away.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Kristin. Anything you'd share on that?
Sure, yeah. Are you planning to sprinkler the building?
It depends on if we use the residential code or the commercial code. If it's residential code, we will not.
Okay. I just saw, based on the size of the water line going in, I'm just curious.
We're planning that some point in time that may occur, so that's why we're bringing the six-inch now.
It'll be there if you need it.
Yes.
Okay. As you mentioned, there will be a small pump station, so we'd like to see some more information on that, a little engineer's report detailing that. One of the concerns with that pump station is, I think you had stated, use of a portable generator?
No, I don't know where that came from. There will be a generator that serves this facility. So the pump station will be connected to the generator, so it will have generator capacity.
Okay.
We're working through those details now.
Somewhere. Okay.
Definitely not portable.
Yeah, I don't know if it was in the EAF or something. I read it somewhere.
If it was, it was a typo. This will be connected to a full-time generator.
Understood. Erosion control plan. I know, so this project is not necessarily requiring a SWIP. It doesn't disturb over an acre, but it's modifying some existing facilities that are part of the overall stormwater system for the site. So there was an amendment submitted. So there's just a couple of things that we need to go over and tweak and make sure that with the modifications that they're meeting the right requirements as they were before. It's a little bit different of a system, so we just got to go along all those numbers.
What we did, just to know, when we built the parking lot, we put, there used to be a pool here, and the pool was creating a bit of agita for somebody sitting at the table with me. So what we did is got rid of the pool and we turned it into a stormwater infiltration basin. So we have an infiltration basin with an underdrain that goes down the hill and to a level spreader. It is prime space because it's right next to what will be gathering space and a courtyard. So what we propose to do is convert that and put it into a subsurface infiltration system. And we've done that, we've performed the design, and we've gotten Mr. Bozick's department comments, and we will address those. We've worked with the manufacturer to make sure that the application works. So we will get him the details he's looking for.
You talking about a pool that was part of the amusement park or?
No, no, it was a part of the residence.
Okay.
Backyard pool.
It was a backyard pool that was subject to what a pool on a college campus would be subject to.
Okay.
That's all I'm going to say.
All right. Let's go around the board for any comments. Nicole?
I don't really have any comments. I'm familiar with this building, obviously, because I'm alumni. It was built in 1900, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, before that.
Before that? Wow. Yeah. Yeah, it's a very, it's a beautiful building.
Peter, anything?
Nobody does it better. Good luck.
Thank you.
They're creating a White House for him.
Please don't let him hear you say that.
At this time, it looks good, though.
No comments.
I mean, my only comments was, is there any historical issues to be worried about? And I think you covered that in your review once I read that. So you don't need an archaeological or sort of anything?
No, we did an extensive review when we did the prior activities. And that never popped up. We did find some things with the Winslow Gate down by the Fishback House in Effecinity. But other than that, we've got a clean bill of health for that whole site from OPRHP last time we were through.
Do you know if this area was part of the amusement park or is it too far?
No, this was not. The amusement park stopped at the base of the hill.
Okay.
So, you know, where I should go through North Campus and start up the hill, the amusement park ended right about there.
Okay.
And it was more closer to the water plant, actually.
It was the Winslow estate. That's John Winslow's estate.
Was this end of the site, but the amusement park was more.
Was down further. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application. Direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, folks.
Good luck with this project.
Thank you very much.
Have a happy holiday, all.
You too.
Oh, just had a quick question. Any, any ideas with, uh, how they walk the rail tra, the new rail trailer? You guys own the building, it's next to 51 Fulton, that's 59 or 57?
Yeah. Well, it's right now, it's storage.
Any future plans for that or?
Not, not immediately, but we are undergoing a, a master planning process that's starting, uh, in January. So, uh, I'll look at that.
Sounds good. Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday. Happy New Year. IBM. Never heard of them.
Good evening, folks.
Thanks also to you guys hanging in there. It's a long night sometimes.
Yes, it is.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Bob Butts from Maggie Butson Whale and Attorneys, uh, for IBM.
And Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering Surveying for IBM. Uh, we're here tonight for a lot line alteration and lot combination for the IBM site, which was originally approved on the last subdivision of 10107A back in 2005. The purpose of this is to rearrange some of the lot lines and to combine. So we want to take a portion of Lot 1, so that Building 7 will be on Lot 1. Lot 2, you'll see right here. We're giving this portion here that's part of Lot 2, turning it into Lot 1, so the building's on Lot 1.
So it won't go, so it won't go right through?
Right now, Lot 1 goes through the building. The second is this little slither, Lot 2, which is the entrance way, currently is part of Lot 5. We want to place it with Lot 2.
Makes sense.
So it's part of, what would be common sense, due to some, that would be landlocking Lot 5. So we're combining Lot 5 and 6 into a new lot, which would be modified Lot 6. Otherwise, it would be landlocked.
Perfect.
That's really the simplicity of our action here. There will be nothing constructed, nothing changed of the buildings, no roads. It's just a paper, paper alteration for the purposes of clearing up the site.
Lot 3 is probably where.
Where's Lot 3?
Pardon?
Lot 3.
Lot 3?
Probably where the blue towers are.
Well, the one that was inherited's been sold off.
Sold off.
It's not part of IBM anymore.
Building 5, probably?
Yeah, I believe this.
Okay.
So it's basically just, uh, simplifying the map to make it look better.
All right. Uh, Kristen?
Well, you did a nice job. Thank you. This is on for a secret review for a type 2 action and also lot line revision review. Uh, the review that I provided, uh, again, is largely the, that's straight out of our town code language chapter for, uh, lot line revision. Uh, my only question is, I know that there was a question about sewer lines and the potential need for a transportation corporation. Um, and we, based on the, the answer to that question, I don't know if you have one, uh, we would recommend, um, until you had a clear direction about that, whether or not the board should defer action or actually grant a conditional lot line revision approval. That being said, because there is a time limit affiliated with the lot line revision filing.
These, these properties were both shown on, um, filed map 10170A. And, um, uh, on that map, there's a series of map notes about, about the, uh, sewer, uh, sewer, Lots 1 and 2 are both, are both, um, uh, tenants of the Arlington Sewer District under contract with IBM. Uh, 5 and 6 are, are both in the South Roads Sewer District. And, um, of course, there were also those, those two other commercial lots that fronted on Route 9 on that, shown on that map, Lots 3 and 4, which, which were subsequently so, sold off. Um, the map, um, when it was approved at that time, contained a note that, um, as a condition of the sale of any lot, uh, the purchaser shall provide a separate water and sewer connections to existing or proposed facilities. The proposed connection shall be reviewed and approved by the town of Poughkeepsie. So, um, uh, it was not considered to be necessary at that time for a transportation corporation to be used. We could discuss that with, uh, Jim Teed at, uh, County Health and presumably, uh, we should be able to, uh, handle this map the same way as the previous one.
Okay.
I mean, don't want to get in trouble with a timeline issue. I don't know.
Right, so it's really a question for the applicant at this point. If the planning board were to grant you approval tonight, you have a maximum of 60 days to file your plat.
And actually, I built in the 60-day time extension, so it's 120 days.
But if you happen to, if, the, for whatever reason, the sewer department did not agree with you that those notes are sufficient and they did require you to get a transportation corporation, it's unlikely, I think, that that would be completed and everything else done in time for you to file. And then you'd have to be right back here, um, to do this all over again.
I think that they will agree. It's a reasonable thing. I think we can get that done.
That is completely up to the applicant at this point, so.
Take the risk.
It's not a risk. It's a, it's, if you call it a risk, I think it's, we need strong confidence that we can discuss this with the health department. Because all they want to do is make sure that we have sewers not being run through pipes with one meter. And their answer to the prob, they came up with a different solution to the problem, transportation corporation. The solution to the issue, it's not even a problem. The solution to that situation was already discussed and utilized in the previous subdivision and done properly when Lot 3 and 4 were sold.
And that's fair, but we're not the people that you're, yeah.
We're not trying to convince you. I'm just trying, we're not trying to convince you. We know it's the health department. We feel, we feel, uh, confident that our proposal will be acceptable to the health department.
Appreciate that. Um, so, and yeah, it's pretty standard that we, I mean, I, I think it's standard. I, I'll let the site civil engineer, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but, uh, even on residential properties, uh, you know, especially residential, but, um, in my experience, we would request that the water sewer be demonstrated on the plat. But I, he might at minimum require that or some other alteration to the ultimate plat that is filed. Um, and, and so, again, this is your decision, if, you know, you feel confident that you can fulfill that within that time. Um, because if a transportation corporation were required, again, there is a process
We understand.
Happen separate of this board.
We understand that.
So.
Worst, worst case, we'd have to come back again, so.
We feel.
You could say hello.
We feel high level confidence dealing with the health department for my entire career. We feel real confident that explaining this to them as an alternative to what they propose is acceptable.
Okay.
And we're willing to go forward. If the town will allow us, we'd like to go forward.
Do it that way, I guess, then. Uh, Bobby, any?
I don't, I, I think, um, sorry. The transportation corporation thing, I, I don't think it's a massive obstacle. I, I think, um, with the common ownership, the way it is, that it, I think they can figure it out with the health department. We don't have any major concerns over it as far as showing lines on plats or anything to that effect at this point in time. So, so I, I don't find it as an issue. I think they need to sort that out with the health department.
And it's not so much that it's an issue, is it? It's just a time, the time constraint that's built in, right?
We understand. If, if it's called a risk, we'll take that risk, but we, we don't feel it as a risk.
All my other comments were clearly technical on comparing the meets and bounds with the plat.
I had some typos, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. It happens.
The map was, uh, it was late 11 o'clock at night to make the deadline. I was on vacation two weeks before the deadline. I had two days before. And I'll be honest, that was 11 or 12 at night.
Yeah.
Too many cups of coffee, so.
Nothing that can't be easily fixed.
It was a 15-page document. I think I had severnary typos, so thank you. And actually, one typo went over and over.
Over and over.
It was the same bearing. I had one bearing wrong, but it occurred in five different descriptions. So the one error compounded to five errors, and I apologize for that.
Not a big deal.
I think we've all been there.
And just to the point of, of the chapter requirements for a lot line, um, and, and the documentation, I don't know if there was a resolution, um, about.
Received a draft document.
Okay.
I'm perfectly comfortable that we can make any changes we need to, and they'll be done timely. So I'm fine with it being a condition of approval.
All right. Thanks, Susan. Any score on the board for quick comments? Uh, Joni?
No, no comments.
No comment.
No, no comments.
Yep, nothing from either. It looks pretty, I'm glad the way you explained it there, the, well, the reasons for it, and that worked out great.
I also added an insert of the zoning. You can see on the right side, there was a question. There's a little slither at the road that's in the other zone I missed. The main site is industrial. It's just the little entrance right here. Little entrance way.
Oh, okay.
Just that little road is the VH, so, so not to crowd the map. I put a little insert right here for it to make it clean, easier to see.
And from a lot line revision legal perspective, that makes no difference.
Okay.
So, just so. I see Nicole looking at me. That's fine. It just, when, once the lines are changed, one parcel will be in two different zones. But it only becomes an issue if there's any development proposed and we can deal with it then.
I mean, we had, we had a recent, I think, Mazda split.
Right.
Yeah, that happens.
Well, that cur.
It's still residential behind, so.
Yes, correct.
All right. I move the planning board to determine that the proposal meets criteria of a secure type 2 action pursuant to seeker part 617.5C16, no further environmental reviews required.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a one-time 60-day extension as permitted by town code of said approval from Monday, uh, February 19th, 2024, forward to Friday, April 19th, 2024, subject to the following, one through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
One more. We've got AP packaging time extensions. I move we grant 290-day time extensions of conditional amended site plan approval from February 17th, 2024, forward to August 15th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes the last rule, six to zero. Any other business before the board tonight?
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.